And the recording.
Let me know when you're ready, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
The live stream is rolling and we are recording, your worship.
Thank you. This, this public meeting and public hearing meetings is being held by electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw number 2028-020.
Electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw number 2028-020.
I'm getting real feedback here, Doug.
Yes, your worship, I'm just turning on, I'm muting everybody other than.
Thank you, I'll start over again. This public hearing, public meetings, meeting is being held by electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw number 2020-020 as amended in section 238, 3.1 of the municipal act 2001 as amended. The meeting will be live streamed on the municipality's YouTube channel. The video recording will be uploaded to the municipality of Trent Hills website following the meeting. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
I'm off.
Moved by Rick and seconded by Rose. Doug, recall the.
Counselor English?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Callahan McLennan?
Yes.
Counselor Metcalf?
Yes.
Counselor Redden?
Yes.
Counselor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Bratney? Oh, we've got you muted, sir. Counselor Bratney?
Yes.
Mayor Cray?
Yes.
Carried by seven, your worship.
Thank you. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Kathy, would you give yours, please?
I actually have a couple, your worship. The first is on item 4H with respect to the development on the street in which I reside. And the second is a disclosure with 4J and 4K with respect to a relationship that I have in terms of a developer.
Thank you, and Rick, would you like to disclose, please?
Yes, I too will be abstaining from 48, C09/220, the Nazby Townhouses.
Thank you. Okay, so. We are at public hearings, public meetings. These public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with the provisions of the planning act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to formally hear and receive public and agency comments. The intent of these statutory public hearings and the public meetings is to receive public feedback and incorporate it into a recommendation report for staff. No decisions will be made during this meeting. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded for the purpose of a creation of a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the planning act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local and provincial land use policy. The process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified have been or can be addressed. The applicant or applicants or agents, agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submissions and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interested members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to the application being dealt with at this meeting and hearing. All persons addressing council must state their full name and address and must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide to the public hearing, the public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, had technical issue, technical issues, or prefer to submit comments following the public hearing, you may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. That's all in lowercase, planning@trenthills.ca. The municipality requires these comments no later than seven days after this meeting to ensure the comments can be reviewed by planning staff prior to preparing a final recommendation report to be heard at a future council meeting. This time, I asked Liz to take over for severance consent application B21-2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing for severance consent application B21-2020, which has been filed by Glenn Hay, Anadelia and Corbin Hay. The property is located in part of lot 26, concession four, being the corner of the fourth line east and Wingfield Road in the former township of Seymour. And I'm just going to bring up the mapping. The application proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 24.5 acres of vacant land from approximately 70 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion being approximately 45.5 acres is also vacant land. We did circulate to Neil Allenson, our manager of roads and urban services, who advised us that this portion of Wingfield Road is maintained by Sterling Roden Township. We conducted a site meeting with the road superintendent for Sterling Roden and did determine that a site-specific entrance is available on the subject severed parcel. We received comments from Lower Trent Conservation Authority. The applicants had done a pre-consultation and a wetland assessment with Lower Trent Conservation. And that is showing the proposed severed parcel. And back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is the applicant or an agent present?
Yes. Anadelia Hay is here.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of council? Seeing none. Is there anyone present that wishes to ask a question of the applicant? Seeing none. Any further comments from planning staff? Thank you. To the, to the next one. The severance consent application B22-2020 and B23-2020 for Lewis Eggleton, Mary Nickel, Craig Nickel, Paul Nickel, Alexandria Thompson, 196 Concession Road, 3 West, the former township of Percy. And I turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You read that. This is the public hearing or public meeting for severance consent application B22-2020, which proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 21.95 acres of vacant land from approximately, oh, sorry, yeah, 36.81 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion being approximately 14.86 acres contains the existing residential dwelling. Severance consent application B23-2020 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 27.06 acres of vacant land from approximately 54.41 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion being approximately 27.35 acres of vacant land will be used for residential building purposes. We did circulate the applications to Neil Allenson, our manager of roads and urban services, who has identified some concerns with the sightlines for a couple of the proposed parcels. We've had further discussions with the applicant, who is going to go out and mark all the corners for us so we can conduct a site meeting within the next couple of weeks before the applications would come back before council again. Lower Trent Conservation Authority did provide their comments, and we're still waiting on the comments back for source water protection. The applicant has been advised by Lower Trent that they're going to need to do a risk management assessment plan. This is required for livestock grazing on the subject property. Once that is complete, Lower Trent has advised they will issue the source water protection clearance notice. And then back to you.
Thank you very much, Liz. Do we have anyone here for this application?
Yes, my name's Louise Eggleton.
Hi, that's fine, thank you, Louise. Do you have any questions of council? Or I should say, council have any questions for you? Okay.
I don't have any questions for council.
That's good, and it would appear that there's no questions from council. Is there anyone with us who wishes to ask a question about this consent? Hearing none, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering, is the present driveway in front of the house a safe one now? Or is that all going to be under review?
Liz, do you have a?
I can jump in here, Mr. Mayor, if you wish. We've been emailing about that, I believe, and Louise may be able to confirm this, that there's an old existing entrance that is not safe, and I believe a new entrance has been put in that the family knows to use, but not always the public knows to use. So that will be one of the things we review when we go out on site.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Yes, just to confirm that that's the case, but also that we would be willing to close the driveway in some manner, put a gate across it, hedging or something to discourage. People turn around in the driveway, why they would do it at the top of the hill, I don't know, but so it's always been a concern of ours, and we use a different driveway. And we'll have to look into getting that official and getting with the site visit. But that's all I can comment on that.
That's, that's fine, thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. We will go on to our next application. Severance consent application B22-2020 and B23-2020. No, I'm sorry, I just did that one. Got to turn the page, sorry. Severance consent application B24-2020 and B25-2020, zoning amendment application C11-2020, Howard Co., Nancy Ree, Heath Drive, former township of Percy. Do we have anyone with us that's for this application?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the solicitor for the applicant was going to be present, but can't get access to a computer till 6:30.
Do you, do you want to move on and come back to this one?
It's entirely up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. We can, we'll move on to severance consent application B26-2020 and B27-2020, zoning amendment application C12-2020 for Peter Locke, 10th Line East, County Road 38, former township of Seymour. Is anyone here for that application? Okay, Liz, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing and public meetings for severance consent application B26-2020, which proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 2.10 acres of vacant land from approximately 76.88 acres for residential building purposes, in which access to the newly created parcel will be via a right-of-way. Severance consent application B27-2020 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 2.09 acres of vacant land for residential building purposes, in which access to this parcel will also be via a right-of-way. The retained portion, being approximately 72.7 acres, can also be used for residential building purposes. The zoning amendment application C12-2020 was submitted in conjunction with the severance applications, in which we would be looking to recognize the creation of the two new parcels, being both the severed portions. The current zoning of the subject lands is rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for the two severed parcels would be a rural residential exception. The exception would acknowledge the reduced lot frontage, seeing as both parcels are accessed via a right-of-way off the county road. And the zoning for the retained portion will remain rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. And we did circulate to Lower Trent Conservation, as well as Northumberland County for their comments. And if we look at the mapping, I know it's, it's challenging to see, but both parcels do actually have a registered right-of-way at the southwest corner, which, which leads out to County Road 38. And back to you.
Thank you. Is anyone here? We'll ask again, is anyone here for, for this application?
I am here.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, Bob.
Well, very much, Peter. Does council have any questions for this application? Rick and then Ken? You're muted, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not familiar with a right-of-way, and I need to be schooled on it. I don't know if you could help me out, Jim or Liz there. Like, I'm talking width, accessible for emergency vehicles, stuff like that. I'm not familiar with that at all.
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. I did go back to the records from when the parcel was created, the large parcel, in 1988, and the right-of-way access to it was approved then. It's 20 feet wide, and then it goes from the county road into this parcel, and then along the width of it. There was a letter on file from John Tonder approving the access. That's what I've been able to find. We did go out, Neil Allenson, the roads manager, and I did go out to the site, I think probably a couple of years ago now, and determined that it could be made appropriate for emergency access, and we'd actually have the fire chief check on that before any development took place. So that's what I can tell you about it. Perhaps the applicant has more history on it.
Not so much history, but the road is in good shape, and it would become a mutual agreement between the landowners and myself, that we would take care of the road for emergencies after construction of homes. It would be in good shape.
Thank you. Ken?
Yes, my question had to do too with the right-of-way and with the county denying it, and then it looks like there is going to be a workaround that would be acceptable to the county, so that was my question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I can address that. So as I say, I did find the history of the creation of it. I think, from what I understand, it's in a good location in terms of a relatively flat, straight stretch of road, so I think access on and off of the, of the county road is, shouldn't be a question. The applicant will have to apply for an entrance onto the county road at some point. You know, is.
Entrance is already there, though, Jim.
So, okay, so perhaps the, they have the record of the approved entrance that we can access. So that, that's a little bit more information.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, just concerning the letter or the Lower Trent comments, with these two severance parcels, is, is there building pieces within those two that the Lower Trent have, have seen that there's able to be a building put on?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at the 120-meter buffer from the water course that flows through the property, and I, through measuring with the GIS, thought there were sites. Those comments didn't really appear to be clear in the Lower Trent comments. They were more concerned with the, with the, I guess, the bedrock, the possibility of karst rock features on the property, so I think that's the thing we'll have to follow up about with Lower Trent.
Thank you, and Kathy?
My, my question, I guess, was a little similar to Mike's. I was just curious what the, what progress had been made with respect to the, the Lower Trent recommendations. It's quite a, quite an extensive report, and, and I did note that there was some conditional approval that could, could be made. So I guess, perhaps you've updated that, or there may be more forthcoming. And I did have a second question in terms of anticipated numbers of, of homes at some point, possibly initially, or if there's future development as well.
Not to my acknowledgement on the county roadside, possibly on the 10th roadside. I do have a self-maintained road from County Road 38 to the 10th line. Future considerations, possibly, but not at this time.
Just, Mr. Mayor, to address the Lower Trent comments, we certainly want to have some conversations with the Lower Trent about the comments and what we need to do to address those, and then discuss that with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Any further comments, Peter?
No, other than, what is the next step there? Other than the road in the Lower Trent, somebody from Trent Hills will get back to me?
Yes.
On these?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good for now?
Yep, that's great, thanks, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to severance consent application B28-2020. Patricia Valerie Christmas, 6212, County Road 50, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing for the severance consent application, which proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 25.033 acres of vacant land from approximately 50.123 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion, being approximately 25.09 acres, contains the existing residential and residential dwelling and outbuilding. We did circulate to Lower Trent Conservation Authority, in which their comments were received. We circulated for source water protection, in which Lower Trent Conservation has issued the certificate after the agenda was issued, so it is now in the file. And we also circulated to Northumberland County for their comments. And there is the map of the proposed severed parcel. The applicants have advised, it was their understanding at some point that these were two separate parcels, but we've been unable to find the history on that, so they do wish to return it back to the two.
Thanks, Liz. Any councils have a questions on this one? Do we have someone here? Well, I see Josie Christmas is here. So does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Michael?
Thank you, your worship. So again, this is on a county road, and they've requested that we have a shared drive. Is that something that is agreeable in this application? You know, has that discussion come forward?
Can I, I can't hear you. She doesn't seem to be muted.
Maybe while she's trying to connect, I can just comment that it's up to, you know, it's on a county road, they're the ones that would provide the, the approval for any entrances, so the applicant would have to work with them on, you know, how that's done. Certainly, I think entrances, like, you can see how, I think if you go back to the map, you can see how the driveway is close to the property line, so I think it could be done with like two entrances side by side, perhaps.
I believe that's what the applicant's saying, that they'd be side by side, no? I want to see my sign language is terrible.
It's a. I can get that, we can get that information before.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to both the applicant and the county and get additional information before, in the next seven days.
Okay, Gene?
That was my concern when I read that about the county's opposition to this, but on the very south edge of the severed property, there is already a gate there. Has that not got some standing to be allowed as the other entrance?
We have to determine through the county if that was an approved entrance in the past.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Christmas is agreeing with that summation. Thank you, Gene and Jim for that. Anyone else have any questions on this? Okay.
I just suggest that we tell Josie, don't get too stressed, we'll be in contact with you, so we can get all your comments back to staff and the rest of council, so don't worry. You look like you're really stressed, so relax.
No, it's not a problem. Thank you. Okay, we will go on to severance consent application B29-2020, a zoning bylaw amendment C13-2020, Keith and Jody Davy, 591 Thompson Road, 8th Line East, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing and public meeting for the severance consent application B29-2020 and zoning amendment application C13-2020. The severance application proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 5.04 acres with the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings from approximately 95.21 acres. The retained portion, being approximately 90.17 acres, is vacant land and will be eligible for residential building permits. The zoning amendment application was filed in conjunction with the severance application, and the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the creation of the one new parcel, which is the severed portion and an approximate size of 5.04 acres. The current zoning of the subject lands is rural agricultural and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for the severed portion will be rural residential. The zoning for the retained portion will remain as rural agricultural and environmentally sensitive. And we did circulate the applications to Neil Allenson, our manager of roads and urban services, as well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome, thank you.
Would the applicant be with us this evening, either Keith or Jody Davy?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, so council, any questions of the applicants? Do you have any questions, Mr. Davy?
No.
Okay, then I think we're fine then. Okay, then I think we're fine then. There's no questions from council. Thanks very much. We're on to, Jim, if you see the lawyer for that previous one, come on, you can let me know and we can go back to that one.
It's Neil Burgess, your worship.
He's always late. We are now at severance consent application B30-2020. Jean-Paul Dejarde and Xavier Needlot, 41 Riverview Drive, 162 Newell's Beach Road, former township of Percy. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing for severance consent application B30/2020. The application proposes a lot line adjustment or lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately 0.05 acres will be severed from part of Lot 7, concession 11, 162 Newell's Beach Road, with the existing outbuildings. And the severed portion will merge to the adjacent lands to the east at 41 Riverview Drive, being 0.34 acres with the existing residential dwelling. And that's the rough map of the proposed application, in which a survey will be completed so we know the definitive lot lines.
Thank you. Is Mr. Dejarde with us, or? Vivier? No? Council have any questions for Liz? Hearing none, we will move on to the zoning application C09-2020. Kathy and Rick have disclosed for this item, so they would turn off their video cameras, please. This is zoning amendment application C09-2020. Nazby Townhouses, Clark Consulting Services, Union Street, east of Nazby Street, Union and Market Street, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for zoning amendment application C09/2020. Further to the draft approved subdivision application SBO 2-2017, the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to meet a condition of the draft plan approval and to recognize the existing 38 vacant lots located east of Nazby, Irtin and Market Street, being approximately 4.87 acres in total. The development will front on Union Street, which is currently not traveled, but dedicated on the registered plan 112. The current zoning of the subject lands is residential type 1 and development. The proposed zoning for the subject lands is residential type 2 to permit townhouse dwellings. The property owner is proposing a townhouse development consisting of approximately 38 two-story residences. And we did receive public comments from Craig Douglas, which were circulated to council. And this is the mapping from the proposed draft approved subdivision application. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Council, any questions? I see Mr. Clark is with us, I believe. And Ken, question?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question about the Union Street, which is not currently being traveled. Is that the street that's going to require upgrades, or just what's the situation on Union Street as far as being incorporated into this development?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the, it will be, Union Street will be connected to Nazby and Market Street and will make a connection through the center of this proposed development and will form the basis for access for most of the townhouse development.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Yes, Mike?
Thank you, worship. There's a few questions that were brought up in the letter that was brought forward here today to council. Do we know if those have been answered to the individual? There's three questions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I did share them with Mr. Clark and I intimated to him that I thought between the two of us, we could satisfy the answers to all three. I believe we've already set out the requirement for privacy fences as a condition of subdivision approval. And I think the other questions Mr. Clark may be able to shed more light on in terms of the appearance of the structures.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, as we indicated at the public meeting for the plan of subdivision, it's the intention of the owner, developer, to use a brick facing on the townhouse. They're interested in doing a quality development on this property. I think the other question had to do with sidewalks and that'll be a matter to be addressed through your public works, but we fully expect that there will be a sidewalk linking Market Street to Union and through to Nazby.
Just to add to that, it is a requirement to have a sidewalk on at least one side when new municipal streets are constructed. And it makes sense that since the sidewalk is already on that side of the street, that we continue that sidewalk as part of the development. That will be at the developer's cost. Just to address the appearance, I think we're going to look to see, I know there's new, I don't know how far the Planning Act goes in terms of being able to dictate the designs of the buildings, but it might be something we can do. Probably would be doing site plan control on a block-by-block basis as each block of townhouses are built. And so it may be able to be addressed there. And I would also, it's my understanding that these units will be for sale. So they're not rental units. They're for sale for market units. So again, a product that will sell quickly, I would think.
Any other questions?
Didn't know whether Mr. Douglas wanted to address any more of those issues, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't realize, I'm sorry. I missed that he was here. Mr. Douglas, anything else you'd like to add?
Hi there. No. Yes, I submitted those three points of clarification. So I'm assuming that the privacy fence is what Mr. Clark has mentioned is a goal. And I know that the staff report that was dated December the 18th of 2018 did clarify that the developer was interested in a privacy fence. So I'm happy to hear that. There was also a nice picture of the development on the staff report of December the 18th, 2018. And my question for Mr. Clark is, is that still the proposal, sir, that you're going to go ahead with that brick structure? That's a similar picture of what's going to be currently planned?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's my understanding.
Yep, they look like a very nice structure, Mr. Clark. So hopefully the developer will carry forward on that, as well as a sidewalk and a privacy fence. And that would make me very happy. That was the only three points of clarification that I wish to address at today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Appreciate it. Okay, I see that Sam Burgess has joined us. We have severance consent application B24-2020 and B25-2020. Doug, I have a quick question. Sam Burgess is my godson. Should I be declaring a conflict here?
Actually, it's his father who's here.
Oh, so you have Sam doing your legwork for you?
Obviously, the IT part is done by him.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much. So we have severance consent application B24-2020 and B25-2020. Zoning amendment application C11-2020. Howard Co. and Nancy Ray, Heath Drive, former township of Percy. Liz, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting and public hearing for severance consent applications B24 and B25-2020, as well as zoning amendment application C11-2020. Severance consent application B24 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately two acres of vacant land from approximately 13 acres for residential building purposes. Severance consent application B25 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately two acres of vacant land from approximately 13 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion being approximately nine acres, which is also vacant land, will also be available for residential building purposes. The zoning amendment application was submitted in conjunction with the severance applications. And the purpose of the zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the creation of the two new parcels through the severance applications. The current zoning of the subject lands is rural and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for the proposed severed parcels will be rural residential. The zoning for the retained portion would be a rural exception. And the exception to the rural zoning would acknowledge the reduced lot sizing within the rural zone. All environmentally sensitive zoning will remain in place. And we did circulate to Neil Allenson, our manager of Roads and Urban Services, who did identify that there may be some concerns and we would have to have very site-specific entrances. We also circulated to Northumberland County, even though the entrances will have to come off the municipal road. And the county did provide some comments. And we also received some comments from Paul and Nancy McDonald, which are adjacent landowners. And this is the mapping showing the two proposed severed parcels, as well as the rezoning.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Neil Burgess? Michael?
Yes, through you, your worship. Just looking at the access possibilities of these properties, County Road 25 versus Heath Drive, do we know whether it's coming off of the municipal road or the county road? Because there was concern about traffic and the curbs on County Road 25.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So whenever there's an option between a local municipal road and a county road, the county policy states that the entrances have to come off the municipal road. So the applicant and everyone anticipated that when these applications were made. So that's, the plan is, I think, for Neil Allenson and I to go out there and look at site-specific locations. We've already talked to Mr. Burgess about the need, even on the retained lot, to relocate that entrance to a better spot. So that is, we're aware of what we have to do and it's in the works.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I mean, we got him on the hot seat. Yes, Rick?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wondered, Jim, why is this class environmentally sensitive?
It's because of the, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's because of the wooded area on the north half of the lot. And I suspect, too, this is quite a hilly property, so there'd be some steep slopes that we want to be careful of as well. But the southern portion is where there's some hay fields, which would be the rural zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. We'll carry on.
Can I ask a question? Yes, I'm sorry. I was waiting to have an appropriate opportunity. I have found my mute button. So I wondered if at the end I can wait, if we can just address the issue they had about the driveway?
Okay, well.
Wait to the end?
Well, just a sec. We're finished now with this application. So if you would like to make a comment on the driveways?
Just calling mom to make sure she's in on it, because it was really frustrating. I had said that to Liz earlier. I was worried about my not getting through. Okay, hi, mom. I've got the council meeting back on, so I'm just listening now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You found the button?
Yeah, okay, they're listening to us now, mom. Just one sec. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, there was a question earlier about the driveway access.
Yes.
There is a separate access that is in place for this piece of property we want to sever. It was put in by the county. There was a letter that we sent in as well with our application, showing that the county roads put in the driveway access to this piece of land. Because it was always two separate pieces of land and it just was somehow misfiled from the beginning, because we still have two deeds for this land as well. And so there is a letter attached by the county. The county put in the driveway that goes to this piece of land we're hoping to sever. If that helps anybody, because I heard somebody saying something about shared driveway. It's not a shared driveway. There's a driveway to the one lot that goes to where the house is. And there's a separate driveway with curbs that goes to this severed land that we want to sever, this other law.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. You've got all that?
Yeah, we'll make sure that if the county already doesn't have a copy of that letter, that they get one of the copies that the Christmases provided to us.
Thank you.
You have that on file, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So is there anything I have to do now? What happens now? I'm sorry that I was panicking. I couldn't find the mute button. Or unmute button, I guess.
Listen, you're not alone. Let me tell you, you're not alone.
I think to answer that, we'll just work with the applicants to make sure the information gets to the county and they can have that conversation with county staff.
Okay, so does that mean that we'll likely have another meeting with council?
Yes, there'll be a further meeting where these are approved. This meeting is a meeting to propose it and then to have any questions. And then we give people seven days to bring forward any comments they want on each of these severances. And then we'll have a meeting to approve, okay?
Okay, thank you very much for putting me back on the list. I appreciate that.
No problem. And somebody from planning will be in touch with you to let you know when we're doing it, okay?
Okay, thanks again. I know where the mute button is.
Okay, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now at a proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance through Clark Consulting Services on behalf of 186-5106 Ontario Limited, Isle Reno, part of Lot 12 between concession 13 and concession 14, being part two on Plan 39R-11569 on Napan Island, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for the proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance. The purpose and effect of the subject application is to enact a bylaw to stop up, close, and offer for sale to the abutting property owners. A portion of the unopened road allowance located in part of Lot 12 between concession 13 and concession 14, which is located on Napan Island in the former township of Seymour. Upon preconsultation, we were in communication with Clark Consulting, who conducted a title search just to ensure that the subject road allowance was in fact owned by Trent Hills. And the title search did say the Trent Hills owned it. With the applicant actually owning both sides of the road allowance, there is no adverse impact on any adjacent property owners. And on the survey, you can see where the subject road allowance is located.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from council? While I'm waiting, I'm just wondering, does this just make the lots bigger? While I'm waiting, I'm just wondering, does this just make the lots bigger by taking out the road allowance? Or does it?
Mr. Mayor, basically, right now, the road allowance divides that whole area into two parcels, and by closing it and adding it, it will become one large parcel, and then the plan of subdivision can be imposed on top of that as approved.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Does anyone here joining us have any questions on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, no questions. We appreciate sorting this out so that we can get on with the plan of subdivision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. In that case, we will move on to the next plan. Kathy, you're disclosing on this one? Thank you. So Plan of Condominium SB 01-2020 2003603, Ontario Corporation, McDonald Homes, First Street, east of Elmore Street, former town of Campbellford. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for the Plan of Condominium SB 01-2020. An application for a vacant land condominium has been received from McDonald Homes. The subject lands are located in Plan 112, Block C, Lot 11, which is east of Elmore Street. The purpose of the application is to create a vacant land condominium comprising the road that will serve 21 freehold townhouse units. The road will also contain easements for the sewer and water lines, which will serve the townhouse units. The creation of this vacant land condominium will allow the condominium corporation to own and maintain the road as a common element. We did circulate to Neil Allenson, our manager of Roads and Urban Services, who had provided some comments through the site plan process. And this is just the diagram showing where the common road element would be located. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Liz. Any council, any question? And who? Is there someone with us from McDonald Homes?
There are a few people, Mr. Mayor.
David McDonald down in the corner here. Okay, so any, any questions, council? Okay, no questions from council? Is there anyone else joining us that has any questions regarding this application? Thank you very much. We will move on to the next one, Plan of Subdivision SB 02 2020, Zoning Amendment Application C 14-2020 2003603, Ontario Corporation, McDonald Homes, Homewood Avenue, former village of Hastings. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for Plan of Subdivision SB 02/2020 and Zoning Amendment Application C 14/2020. An application for vacant land subdivision has been received. The purpose of the application is to create 26 dwelling units, consisting of 10 lots for four, 10 lots for single detached residential dwellings, four semi-detached dwellings, and 12 townhouse units contained in three blocks. The site will also contain a stormwater management facility and a walkway. No new roads are required, as the land can be accessed through Homewood Avenue, and existing services can be extended to the subdivision. The zoning amendment was filed in conjunction with the subdivision application. The current zoning of the subject lands is shoreline residential and development. The proposed zoning for the subject lands is residential type two, to permit townhouse dwellings and the residential development. We did circulate to Neil Allenson, the manager, manager of Roads and Urban Services, as well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority, in which their comments are still pending as they review the studies that were submitted with the application. And as you can see on the PowerPoint, we did receive comments from the public prior to the issuance of the agenda, as well as after the agenda was issued. And all of those comments were circulated to council for their review and consideration. And this is the concept plan, the development site plan, as submitted by the developer and their consultant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Liz. So Mr. McDonald is still here. Any questions from council? Ken?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This subdivision or this planned development backs onto the TransCanada Trail, and my concern was, is there going to be any fencing put in so there's privacy between the people who own the property and the trail users, so that, you know, that's a snowbilled trail, it's an ATV trail, it's a walking trail, it's a bike trail? I would think that there should be some sort of privacy or security between the homes and there's families living there getting out onto the trail, so I just wondered if there's any plans to secure fencing on the trail side.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Hutchison. I'm a planner with RFA Planning Consultant in Belleville, and that's a valid point and will be incorporated in the final plan of subdivision and in the development of the lots that back onto the trail, as you have noted.
Thank you, sir. Michael?
Thank you, your worship. Just to continue on with Ken's point about fencing, I would also hope that there's a plan for a vegetative buffer between the trail and homes there to maintain vegetation between that area, and possibly looking into sound barrier. That area is quite highly used back in behind with the trails, and like Ken said, there is motorized vehicles that are able to use there as well. Another point brought up was adequate parking, and I believe staff would be able to advise me better, but the adequate parking would be the responsibility of the developer, and that would be shared through a site plan in the future, I would hazard a guess.
Mr. Mayor, I can tackle that one through you. So the zoning requires that each lot would have at least two parking places. That's the requirement for a single-family home or half of a semi-detached unit or a townhouse unit. I believe all the units proposed would have a garage. Spencer can confirm that. And also, they would have a driveway with a six-meter, 20-foot setback from the road.
Yes, correct, Jim. I mean, like any, any property in the properties across the street on Homewood, every house provides its own onsite parking, and these are large lots that can provide onsite parking. And so we don't see any issue with parking on the street. The townhouses, the semi-detached, and the singles will all provide their own onsite parking as per the zoning bylaw.
Michael?
Just further, I don't know if the representative would like to speak to any of the studies that are planned or completed so far with the development. I know that most of them were provided with the information, but possibly a quick update on that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity. So as noted, back in February, when we submitted this application, there was a planning report prepared by our firm, looked at all the planning aspects of this development, the rezoning, and conformity with the provincial policy statement, the official plan of Northumberland, and the village of Hastings, the zoning bylaw, the Planning Act with regards to subdivision approval, and also the growth plan for the Greater Horseshoe. So we looked at all those documents, commented on them all. From our perspective, it meets every one of those documents and is in conformity. Essentially, in an overview, it's infill development within an existing settlement area with a bit of, I could call it intensification, so instead of just single families, we have a bit of single families, we have a few semi-detached and some townhouses. And again, what the documents want is a range of dwelling types for different types of individuals who, for whatever reason, want a single, a semi, or a townhouse. Besides the planning documentation, we submitted a servicing brief, a traffic review, a stormwater management report, and an environmental impact study. We also discussed this with Lower Trent on source water protection. We have an email from December where essentially, as a first cut, they have no issue with this, because essentially, these are single-family semi-low-density residential, so the potential for generating an issue for source water is minimal, if not negligible. To go back to the studies, the sort of engineering studies, servicing can be serviced with the existing municipal services in Homewood. The road may have to be upgraded to allow the extra driveways on the other side, on the inside of the curve of the road. Traffic is saying this, this doesn't exceed any normal situation. Most roads that we know of are two-sided with houses on either side, and potentially cul-de-sac at the end. So again, this is in the realm of what a traffic engineer would say is acceptable load on the road. The stormwater management has looked at stormwater and grading. We propose a pond at the far end of the road, and it will deal with quantity and quality, and ensure that the stormwater leaving the property is up to level-one standards. And there was an extensive environmental study submitted that looked at all the various aspects of the environment, looked at vegetation, looked at wildlife and birds, looked at, excuse me for a second, significant wildlife, species at risk, environmental-sensitive areas, and fisheries. And based on the technical review, all of these issues have been looked at. There are no issues, no species at risk, no wildlife that have to be specifically looked after. There's recommendations of how to mitigate things during construction, because of course, equipment moves on, vegetation will be cleared out. Every effort, as referred to a few minutes ago, to keep existing vegetation along the back of the lots will be attempted, to maintain buffers and some wildlife. Clearly, wildlife will be displaced in all likelihood, but that is not an abnormal situation in an urban area where you construct houses. So that's a basic rundown of the studies submitted to the day.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in on a bit of that, too. I'd just like to note that before any submissions were made, there was quite a bit of preconsultation with municipal staff, especially looking at the ability of the services on Homewood to support any type of proposal that was brought forward. A note, too, that I believe the terms of reference for the environmental impact study were done in consultation with Lower Trent Council Conservation, and Lower Trent is now reviewing that, so if it was done according to the terms of reference, it should cover all the topics that are required. And just wanted to note that.
Rick, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Jim, you kind answered. I was concerned about the municipal services and being offered there. I believe they're all on the north side. I'm also a little bit concerned about the road. Obviously, there'll be cuts through the road to draw from the municipal services there on the north side of the road, and I just wondered, I am concerned about the road, the shape that it is now, and what it will look like after.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did have discussion about the road situation. I will reconfirm with Roads Manager Neil Allenson, but I think, as was mentioned by the consultant, that if the services are brought across the road, then restoration will have to take place. It may be something done in conjunction with the municipality. Try to find out what the timing of the reconstruction or the resurfacing of that road would be to bring back to council with further comments.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else have any questions? Ken?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, in normal times, we do this in person, and sometimes the developer has some views or sketches of the proposed buildings. I just wondered how they plan to finish these, if you could shed any light on what the exterior of these buildings will look like.
Yeah, I think at this moment, if you don't mind, I'll defer to Mr. McDonald, the developer, to speak to his product, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you through Mr. Mayor. We don't have any finalized concepts at this point. I don't know if you're familiar with the product that we're building in Haven-on-the-Trent and Campbellford, but that would be fairly representative of a typical single-family product for McDonald Homes. So you would be looking at bungalows typically in the neighborhood of 1,400 to 1,600 square feet. The townhomes would be typically in the neighborhood of 1,200 square feet, and also typically a bungalow with an attached garage. In terms of exterior cladding, most are either brick or a combination of brick, stone, and/or siding products. But as I say, we don't have any finalized concepts in place at this point.
I just add, I think there's maybe an example of a semi-detached, too, in Campbellford that people could look at. Mr. McDonald?
That's correct. About a year and a half ago, we did a semi-detached building across the road from King Auto on Bridge Street West. Sure, everyone's probably familiar with King Auto there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Thank you very much. The municipality is accepting written comments on all applications, as discussed, at the September 29th, 2020 public hearing, public meeting, which will be submitted no later than seven days after this meeting. You may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a couple of members of the public that might want to comment on this application.
I'm sorry, yes. So if you would identify yourself to the clerk as you speak, Susan Morris, are you, do you wish to speak?
Are we on now, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Susan Morris?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, you go ahead.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Yes.
There we are.
There we are. Right. We sent a letter in on September 23rd, just when we had received the, your notice of pursuing this particular project, and it, it kind of lays out sort of food for thought for council as to, in their deliberations, over and above the various legal and political and financial considerations to this. We just reflected on our feeling at that time, and there are a number of issues. This dead-end street is going to pose all kinds of challenges for the people who are resident on that street right now, both in the transition stage and later on in the longer term, should townhouses go on the very end of the street, which will bring up a variety of challenges, depending on whether it's owned by the buyer or subsequently rented out to other people. And being in a secluded environment like that, I'm just a little concerned that, that we may get some people there that are not there for the better good of the community at large. The other thing is, in the longer term, again, with the dead-end street, this is the first time that I'm aware or that a project of this magnitude is taking place on a dead-end street.
that a project of this magnitude is taking place on a dead-end street. And that would provide a whole variety of challenges during the transition period. Right now, there's a lot of people who walk along that street mainly because of the environmental conditions. And that was one of the reasons we bought on that street was the fact that we were close to nature and what have you. As this construction is initiated, there's, it's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic on a road that's very narrow and with people walking. And we were just wondering if there is a plan in the near future for the upgrading of that street, which will include curbs and a sidewalk for the people who avail themselves of of the nature on that street at the present time. And also, I think that we're concerned about the rental aspect and also the reduction of value of some of the homes on that street right now, and what effect that might have on the whole tax assessment of a dwelling on that street. So our letter was intended just to highlight a variety of areas, recognize that it is the dead end with the challenges that will come in the transition and the final outcome of homes that will be allocated on the street. And that's, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had at this time to say. Jim, do you want to address any of that, or does?
Through you, Mr. I should certainly. I think I've already indicated where you hope to get additional information on the plans for the road. I would note that there is a connection from Homewood to the TransCanada Trail incorporated into the plan to provide access not only for the new development, but for anyone who's on Homewood to access the trail. But I understand the points about the sidewalk as well. And I think, too, very good points about staging of the construction. And I think the developer certainly is familiar with those issues. And I think we can work to answer those questions as well.
Okay, that's great, Jim. And and on the transition part of it, emergency vehicle access is going to be critically important for people who are working on there. There's a variety of different age groups and what have you. But in the area of fire, health, and police, it's important that when you start putting in the attachments to the new homes, and you're going to have to cross the road and block off the road, there will be a congestion of traffic by the people who live there because they won't be able to get up the street depending on the plan of how you access those services that are on the north side. And that may pose a bit of a problem, and some of the residents may be a little uncomfortable with that.
Again, I think that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. And I think as part of the construction plan, we can address how that's going to take place. Certainly, when the municipality undertakes construction, we always maintain access for the citizens that live on the street and for emergency services. So there's some familiarity with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I see Sharon Godfrey, do you wish to speak? Sharon, okay, we have Jonathan.
He's with McDonald Homes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Spencer. So Sharon Godfrey, are you able to join us if you want to ask a question? Okay, hearing nothing. I would take that she doesn't wish to ask a question. So thank you, Susan Ruane. We appreciate your your comments. And as Jim says, we'll incorporate that into the report. And thank you very much.
Bob, can I just have one more?
Yes?
I think that Sharon is trying to speak. I see her mute going on and off. If she's not able to, I'll get, I'll try to get in touch with her to see if I can answer anything or get ahold of staff, Sharon.
Yeah, we also have the seven-day period, Mr. Mayor, for additional comments. And we're available to discuss this at any time.
Okay, so then, yes, so Sharon, if you can hear me, then you can contact Jim or Liz at the office. And you have seven days to submit any comments that you wish to make after this meeting. So but I would, you know, encourage you to reach out to either Jim or Liz and get any answers that you need. Okay, well, thank you very much. As I said before, I'll read this just so it's, so the municipality is accepting written comments on all applications as discussed at the September 29th, 2020 Public Hearings Public Meetings, which must be submitted no later than seven days after this meeting. You may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. And that's all in lowercase letters. Thank you very much. And this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Rose, second by Rick. And Doug, would you pull the vote, please?
Deputy Mayor Kellerher McLennan?
Yes.
Councilor Matt Caff?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
Yes.
Councilor Tully?
Yes.
Councilor Bratney?
Yes.
Councilor English?
Yes.
Mayor Crete?
Yes.
We adjourned, your worship. If you can give me a moment, I will stop the live stream and I will stop the recording.